Evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I chair the planning board. I call the meeting to order of July 8th, 2024 at 6:31 PM. Let the vote call vote, please. Carol Hoxes present.
Robert Derry in present. Lance McNally present.
And Laura Schifrin present. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, equal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's thank all of our veterans. All of those serving now as well as all of our first responders. You've been used a lot lately. Those fronts. The meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Towns of Towns and YouTube channel. And 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions. Just see what's 1.1. Six twenty-four. Okay. We don't have the minutes of the last meeting, so they're being deleted. Okay, but 3.1, six twenty-four meeting minutes. That has not been uploaded to YouTube yet, so that was not able to do that. And then, meeting before. We also didn't approve the meeting minutes from before that. The previous ones. So just seeing here. Beth, are they in my pocket here?
No, both meeting, draft meeting minutes from June 1st and June 24th are going to be deferred to July 22nd planning board meeting, please.
Okay. Okay, very good. That's fine. So, okay, and it'll be deferred to July 22nd even. And 5.4. 5.4, new planning board member resource library. Defer to 722. Okay. And then... So that's all my changes, deletions that I have. And then 1.5 administrative report.
Yep. I'll have to do it from memory. I apologize, I left it on my desk, but in general.
Do I have a copy?
No, I didn't send you a copy. It's in my, it's in my office right now. So I'm gonna do it from memory. Let's start with MBTA communities. MRPC is working on revising or reviewing District 3 as requested at the last meeting. And we're waiting for that to come in. He, he did revise the bylaw, draft bylaw, MFOD bylaw, and that's in, a print copy is on the table for you. And Chair Schifrin, he did note that you were correct as far as the, what was the comparable community, like the comparable affordability. Do you remember that? You had the discussion about which index should be used? No, you don't, do you? It was like a Boston Quincy, something like that. Anyway, you were.
Yeah. The example was not comparable to our community.
Correct, so you were right. So he did correct that.
Of that, that I was right. Somebody said I was right.
You were. Absolutely. So I do, we've asked if he would come to the July 22nd meeting and, you know, let us know what his findings are. And then perhaps the board could make a decision at that point on the overlay district so that we can go ahead and submit that draft with the, with the selected overlay district to the executive housing, live, housing and livable communities because they're going to review it for the town and give us their feedback. So that's in the works, but we can't submit it for review until, yeah, until that's on, that's selected, that outlined. So that's coming up. And again, on July 22nd, when hopefully Joe Boyle comes back from MRPC, we'll have the, another discussion on the ADU, accessory dwelling units, the DLTA. So that, that bylaw is going to be rewritten as well. Moving on to master plan. Jessica's been working real hard on that and she has it submitted with the state. She also has been trying to process in the energy committee goals that were presented to the board back in like February. Trying to find a way to get those into the document. And have, you know, she's also been in communication with the energy committee about how those are going to be integrated. So that's going fine. Let's see what else is going on.
There. Can she hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Are you hearing me?
Yeah, I'm hearing you. I just have a question about the water department. You had sent an email to the water department to get clarification on the proximity of town water to these parcels.
Yeah, Andrew, Andrew had asked a question because he wanted to clarify where the water, the public water supply ended on Route 13. And it does end a little past Emery Road. So it will, it will connect to District 3. It will not to District 1, overlay District 1, the proposed overlay district. Not a problem in the zoning because that's not anything the town has to worry about. And then, and I would venture to guess that public water supply will eventually go down to Lunenburg. So, you know, it shouldn't impact your decision on the overlay district at all.
Okay. Was there a way that, that he may know the commissioner of the water department? How far away from the Lunenburg line the Lunenburg public water is?
I can find that out, yeah. I can find it out from Lunenburg. Yeah, yep.
So it would be great to know both ends of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. So, you're welcome. And so as far as applications go, as you know, 108 Fitchburg Road. Board made a site visit on July 1st. That's, the public hearing is opening in a few minutes. And I'll update you during that time where you should have your update in your public hearing guide. As far as other applications, 22 Main Street still pending. We're waiting on, we're waiting to receive a request for extension for the special permit that was expired. That went out today. But we have received an email. The building commissioner is involved, trying to communicate and kind of expedite the process. So what are the projects of, oh, they, I think we have no new applications other than 108 at this time, but that's that. 27 Scales Lane, the certificate of completion is still pending. But stormwater management, everybody's up to date except for where Three Wheeler Road. We're in arrears on monthly reports as well as, actually, I think that's it. Everybody else is up to date on their monthly inspection reports. On an unfortunate note, our coworker Autumn Buck, the conservation agent, gave her notice of resignation and we just want to thank her for her work. She's a great worker and we're going to miss her in Landuse. So that's an unfortunate note there. I think that's it for now, and if there's more, I'll email it to you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Beth?
Yeah.
Last week, I came across something on my local news internet about the governor making a executive order for having ADUs by right.
Oh, alright.
Have you heard anything about that?
No, I haven't, but I'm good. I'm hoping that when MRPC comes back, they'll be able to, to bring the board up to speed on that. Thank you.
So that solves a lot of our problems.
Okay. Can we go, we've got about three minutes. Could we do the correspondence?
Sure, yeah, there's a lot of that. If you want to read the, there's quite a few notices from other towns there.
Okay, Towne Shirley's zoning board of appeals. The Towne Shirley's zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, August 5th, 2024, at the Town Office Building, 7 Keddie Way, Shirley, Mass. Application submitted by Conad LLC, 182 Great Road, Shirley, Mass. A public hearing for a variance for section 3.6.2D and protective zoning bylaws relating to maximum front yard setback 40 feet. The parcels are located at 182-188 Great Road, Shirley, Mass. Passes ID 72A-6, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4 in the North Shirley Village District. Copy of this application to be obtained from the town floor. Towne Grotton, notice of decision, major site plan review permit, PB-2024-03, 797 Boston Road. Notice is hereby given that the Grotton Planning Board voted to grant a special permit pursuant to the code of Towne Grotton's, Chapter 218, Zoning Section 218-2.5 Site Plan Review to Melissa Robbins, 270 Littleton Road, Suite 32, Westford, Mass. And the land over is 119 Partners LLC, 11th Summer Street, Chelmsford, Mass. Property location is 797 Boston Road, Sessors Bank and Castle, Mass. 113, Castle 49. Deed recorded at South Middlesex Registry Deed. I don't have to read all the.
What was the four? Try to get to the bottom line. They granted a special permit for.
To.
A parcel, but I don't see.
Grant a special permit to, you see where it says what it's for?
Twenty-four units of multifamily age-restricted housing.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Thank you. I say I would have gotten there. Are these all the same? Because there's another one, exact same thing for the 24 units.
I noticed that, Carol. And yeah, there's a slight difference, so don't worry about it. It's a very slight difference, like a lot number or something.
But the major thing is that they granted for 24 units of five and age restricted housing. So, good for them.
Okay, so I don't have to read all three of these?
No.
Towne Shirley Planning Board.
The same thing.
No, this is it. I think this is different. The Towne Shirley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, July 17th.
Just get to the bottom line.
Stormwater needs special permit.
There you go. I'm going to call the order at 6:45. So just hold on.
I think we just have, okay, two more or something.
Yeah, I'll do that.
All right.
It's 6:45. And I will open, convene the public hearing for 108 Fitchburg Road. Applications for age-restricted development and to site plan review special permit and stormwater management permit. Called at 6:45 PM on July 8th. And board members, I'd like you to introduce yourselves.
Robert Derry.
Carol Hoxes.
Lance McNally.
And Laura Schifrin. And has everyone signed the signing sheet?
The answer is yes. It's now signed.
Okay. And I will read. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, 9, and 11, and the Code of Towne and Towns and zoning bylaws, 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit, 145-65 Special Permits, and 145-54 Age-Restricted Development Townsend Bylaw, Chapter 85 NPDES Phase 2 Stormwater Management and Chapter 175, Article 5 Stormwater Regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 8th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the selectance chambers at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street. And by zone, I'm not going to read the link, to review an application received from Philip Colometta Dyson LLC requesting a site plan review, age-restricted development special permit and stormwater management permit. The proposed project involves construction of three new two-unit residential buildings and the conversion of a single-family home into a two-unit residential building. Additionally, the project includes associated utilities, stormwater management, infrastructure, driveways, and outdoor recreation areas. The property is located at 108 Fitchburg Road, identified on Sessors Map 16, Lot 42, Lot 0, and falls within both RA and RB zoning districts. Interested parties can express their support or opposition during the hearing or submit written comments beforehand. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during regular business hours. Townsend Planning Board Chair Laura Schifrin. Published in the Grotton Herald, June 14th and June 21st. Copy to all departments as well as the others. So now, the applicant's online. And, Paul's online. Is everyone introduced themselves? What is the one on the bottom left? Somebody's iPhone.
Judy. Judy B's iPhone. Can you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, they're muted.
We can't hear you, you're muted.
Hearing, so, okay, if you could just introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, Judy Eaton, 89 Fitchburg Road, Townsend, Mass.
Okay, thank you for joining us. And, your Phillipson, and your engineer.
Yeah, Chris Stoddard.
Chris, okay. And Veronica, and Chris.
Mike, I am kind of under the third row.
Thank you. So the applicant, Chris, are you going to?
Yeah, I can present.
Okay.
You're going to call there.
Sure.
Whatever you're most comfortable. Oh, I'm comfortable, it's whatever you folks want. I can kind of go over the plans here. So yeah, as I said, Chris Stoddard started engineering on behalf of the applicant, Phil Colometta was on the phone. He's not feeling well, that's the reason he wasn't able to attend tonight. So what we have here is at 108 Fitchburg Road, there is an existing single-family home on the property. What we're proposing to do is convert that into a two-family, age-restricted house, and then add three more duplex-style structures to.
So I thought it was already a two, two separate homes.
It's a single family.
Single family? Okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be split into duplex and then we'll have three additional duplex units on.
Okay.
For a total of eight, eight units, we'll call them. So the property currently has two existing buildings as well. There are a garage, kind of a dilapidated little garage, and a shed. Those two buildings will be removed as part of this project. Demolished and hauled off site. As part of the design here, we, we did go out there and do soil testing. We did have the board health agent, Rick Metcalf, there to witness all the testing. So all the soil testing you see on site was done under his witness. The existing house does have a pool in the backyard with a patio and like an outbuilding on it. The new project is, like as I said, we're going to remove the two existing buildings. The, there is a relatively small driveway for ease. Everything north, or everything north is facing up in this project. So to the north side, there was a, a small driveway there. That will be removed as part of the project. We're proposing to do a 24-foot wide driveway coming into the three units. Each unit will have a garage. We have provided three guest parking spaces per the age restriction.
So what's the size of the garage for each unit?
They're going to be one-car garages.
Okay, so will there be places for two cars per resident?
Yeah.
Along with the guests?
So we'll have the one car in the garage and then there's space behind it for the second car.
Okay.
And then we're required to have two-point-something spaces. So we provide our three guest spaces.
Okay.
Who's special spaces have we?
They're right across, so the three units, there are two buildings on the north side and then one on the end, and the three is, we kind of sided them in the middle here so that way it's not, you know, we don't have this guest parking where we're here and have him walk for any weird reason. So we kind of have it sided right in the middle. Fitchburg Road north is up. We're kind of centrally located, the guest parking.
So how many spots are there for guest parking?
Three.
Okay.
And what about the existing, sorry, can I ask the question?
Sure.
What about the existing building, the existing building?
So this is the existing home.
And what is the parking situation?
So there's a garage there and then there's multiple spots for parking within the existing driveway.
And, and that single garage is for the two units in the building?
Correct.
So this part of the existing building is going to become the garage?
That is.
For the two?
Correct. Yes, and then there's multiple parking spaces within that. You know, I can put four more cars in that driveway. Which would then stand as for the.
So is that going to be a two-car garage?
Yeah, I believe it is now currently a two-car garage. I mean, it's definitely wide enough for a two-car garage. I actually don't even need it. I mean, because if I could fit the four cars, one, two, three, four, I don't even need the actual spaces because I just need two per unit. But that kind of gives you a little bit of action.
Isn't there a third guest? Two per unit plus a guest?
No, it's a, the guest is a percentage. So there's three, three guest spaces, one, two, and three right here.
And that includes guests for here? And what is the walking access from these guest units to this home?
Well, it would be the same basic, there's an entrance into this side and then I guess we'd have to come around. There's, I think, an entrance on the front. We haven't, we haven't really configured this building yet. So, but I know there's an access here and there's an access here.
So there would be a walkway from the guest parking to that?
There can be, we don't have one proposed as a specific walkway.
The existing units are going to be converted into two existing single-family. Based on the site visit, I'm not sure that it'll be handicapped accessible from grade.
They, they may not be currently, but they will be.
They what?
If they're not currently, they will be, they'll have to be upgraded to a handicap.
Well, wouldn't that be reflected in the site plan?
Well, because if he can do it within the building, I mean, zero entry steps and things like, I don't, I haven't seen the actual inside the building. I can't, Phil maybe will speak to that with the building commissioner.
And the, the plan doesn't show anything about trash removal.
So, yeah, so what we're going to do, the per, I believe the site visitor folks did discuss it. There was an idea of either having totes put out here with that, I mean, you're looking at 16 totes, that doesn't seem practical. We do have to revise these per the stormwater comments that we just received two hours ago. So with that, we'll show a, an added dumpster location, which will most likely be over here, which is where the existing dumpster.
Where?
Currently sits on the south side of the existing house. That's where the dumpster. Yeah, that's where the south side, which is down towards you. The existing dumpster is over in that area anyways, so we would just, we'll show a concrete pad access with a fence around it.
I think the existing dumpster is right there.
Correct, yes. So we'll show, you know, we'll, now that we have all the comments, we can do the plan revisions, hopefully, once.
So one of the things that was brought to my attention was, okay, so right now, we just got comments today from peer review, so we're going to extend anyway, continue the public hearing. So that it'll be up to the board whether or not they decide if you want to have to expand the peer review to meet zoning bylaws and setbacks and any other requirements that may be needed.
Well, I mean, so, so what's the frontage?
300 and something feet. Total, yeah, it's, I have to do the math in my head, 200 and.
Okay, it's more than 100.
Yeah, oh, yes, yeah, it's 213 plus 162, whatever.
Okay, and are all of the, are there any waivers that you are seeking in terms of requirements?
No.
All right, so we meet the 30-feet setbacks from buildings and what is it, 20 from the?
20 between them.
20 between them and 30 from property lines?
We are 50 off the front and 34 plus or minus is the closest one off the side.
Have you, have you received a review from the building commissioner?
Yes, yeah, I have it over here.
Everything will be read in the record.
At least I think I do. This is what Beth sent out this today, so that's why.
I have the comments for the record.
So, so I'm at continuance, I think.
Right now, it's a continuance because we just got.
I wouldn't, I would ask you not to vote on this.
No, 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 we're not. No, we wouldn't be able to vote tonight, but we've got all the comments and if you want to discuss the comments, that, you know, we'll have the hearing.
Right.
And then see where we are.
So we can also talk, I know it was brought up about the trees along the road. That was a, the highway department requested us to remove those for site visits. Yeah, no, it's, I agree, it's super dangerous.
And they're all dead.
So, yeah, so the intention is to remove this road trees, which, as I said, it was a request from the highway department and obviously we wanted to acknowledge.
I'm not clear on the water, public water availability.
Yeah, so there's town water here. We have talked to the water department. What we, the plan is to, we're going to run in with a two-inch service and the water department allows us to tap nine units off of a two-inch service. So we're only asking for six, so that's one, one cut across the road. And we're discussing internally whether or not we'll directionally bore it rather than cut the road, it's a cost.
So I'm confused, why do you say six?
Because this one.
Because this building already has water.
Okay.
So we have need six new ones, so it was.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
And so the water department, you know, we, we did confirm the water department. I do want to thank one of the comments.
So would this permit be requesting a change of use too from a single family to two-family now?
I don't, I believe under the special permit for the accessible, I don't, he didn't, the zoning commissioner didn't say we had to request a change of use. Because we're asking for a special permit for, maybe Beth can speak to that if she's calling.
So, yeah, so this is a site plan review special permit because it is a change of use that results in a increase in parking spaces. So that's where the special permit is applicable. It is also an age-restricted development special permit along with their required stormwater management application that was filed. So their filings are correct. It does require a good amount of review. So to answer your question, Robert, they don't need to ask for a change of use from a single family to a two-family. What they're doing is they're asking for a change of use for the property, the whole property, under the age-restricted development by law. And you're doing a site plan review.
Yeah.
Okay, so from a stormwater perspective, we have several, obviously, we're increasing impervious area on the site. So as I said, we did do soil testing in the, in the basin locations, the infiltration basin, rain gardens that we're proposing. Easiest way to do it, building one, which is unit one and two, all the roofs will be discharged into a rain garden located in the northeast or northwest corner of the site along with the existing driveway. Everything she flows, nothing she flows into the road, we can start there. All of it she flows this way. Um, so no more additional water in the road. The, a little bit of driveway here plus this building going into this basin. This building, a little bit of driveway, well, and then the remaining yard property will discharge into this basin. And then this building, the majority of the, uh, pavement will discharge into this basin here, which will then eventually get to the old point, which is down here and down here. Like I said, we did just get comments, they were very minor comments, few technical changes, but as a general rule, the design won't change. We are not discharging more water off the site than what already is being discharged off the site. Um, from a septic perspective or sewer perspective, all the, all eight units will be tied into this new septic system back, um, at the back of the site. Uh, as I said, we did do soil testing, Rick Metcalf. Each building will have one septic tank, everything will be under an HOA, um, which will then discharge into a series of sewer manholes and then eventually to the septic system itself. Reserve areas here, obviously that'll all be grassed. Trying to think of what else.
Well, you're still showing the pool here.
Yes, so, as of right now, we've had a, uh, somebody go out and evaluate what it will take to bring the pool up to seven public standards. We also have discussed, we've had Phil contact his lawyer, if that can't work, what we can do is the pool can become just dedicated to one unit and then it's be considered private. But, his intention, obviously, he wants to make the pool available to the whole community. So, we're right now working and figuring what standards we need to be able to do, implement so that the board of health can sign off on that pool as being able to be utilized by the whole.
So, currently is the pool fenced in?
Yeah, Phil?
No, it's not. We haven't passed today.
No, and that's the reason we have somebody out looking and giving us what we.
I noted on the site plan, you have the garage finished floor elevations, but not the residence finished floor elevations.
They're all the same, I didn't, I can, I can add those if you would like.
So.
Cause it's a zero entry step.
Right, but you got the grade at four, zero two.
What building are you guys?
And you got the garage slab half a foot above that.
Um. What building are you guys?
He's looking at units three and four.
Okay. Yeah, so two oh five, yes, so, I mean, obviously we have to sheet fill the water away from the front of the building.
Right, right, but I'm concerned here, this, these are, uh, special units designed for aging people. And so, that would imply that the finished grade, interior floor grade would have to be four zero three to meet the code, the building code.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Hartley, can you let me screen share for those that are online so they can see the plan? Hartley?
I guess I'm confused, I don't understand.
Well, I'm looking at the grade.
I, yeah, I get that, I mean, I don't, is, is.
Okay, hold on please, I, uh, give me a second here.
Thank you.
Okay, Beth, you should be able to do it now.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Right, in summary, the grade exterior grade finished grade is four zero two.
Correct, outside of the building.
Right, then you show the finished floor of the garage, four zero two point five, which is half a foot higher than the finished grade. Now, the building code requires when there's a garage attached to occupied space, that the garage slab has to be a minimum of six inches below the occupied space. So, that would put the finished floor elevation in the units as a minimum of four zero three.
Okay.
So, um, again, uh, so, we're talking about the same concern I had on the existing building as far as making them accessible.
Well, I can add, I can add the, uh, elevations at the walkways to the building and can make sure that this running slope is less than two percent.
Well, I, I think, one of the things that's efficient here is there's no architectural plans to go along with that, that would explain that.
But I can, yeah, and I can add that as a no and put the actual elevations on there so that when you see.
We wanna be sure it's gonna work.
And that's right, that's, that's not an issue.
I think it's gonna be more intense on the existing building.
So, well, I think, I think what Robert is, Robert is bringing up is that there are requirements in the code.
In the building code, correct.
Under, under the special permit that you're seeking, that we cannot validate through these plans.
Right.
In particular, you know, that a two family townhouse shall have one zero step entrance, doorways with a thirty-six inch clear passage, master bedroom and inaccessible en suite bathroom located on the same floor as the kitchen, living room. Master bedroom en suite designed and equipped for seniors and people with mobility impairments. Um, of energy efficient design techniques such as natural two cooling heating and, um, use of sun and wind energy generation systems, et cetera. So, there's, there's a lot of, you know.
We need the architectural.
Right, and so, I, well, those, those are all the concerns, um, and of course, the intent here is to, we're gonna allow this, it has to comply with all the standards that are needed. And we haven't been able to verify any of that.
Does, can I, does Phil, Phil, do you have the architectural comments on it?
You might get loaded. Good morning, Chair, uh, good afternoon, Chair, I just, a heat stroke or something came through me at noon. Um, losing my voice and sweat, so I apologize, I'm not there. I can, I can upload, I thought we, I, I was under the impression we were looking at the site plan, uh, we did, we did have a, uh, a set of plans for the vertical buildings, um, which can be updated or revised, uh, the next meeting. Um, to Robert's, um, comment about the zero entry, the, the, the main entry will have a walkway coming up into the porch, just like the similar project that's down the road at ninety-six. The garage elevation, there'll be a step up into the main house.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Step up into the main house.
So, the front of the garage, it will have a step up, he said, but the main entryway, walkway will have zero entries, he said, similar to the one at ninety-six.
Um, and then the question of the pool and regarding the functions for aging, I don't see how that can may be made compliant in my own opinion.
Well, he's already stated that he's gonna look into that, is that somebody else doing that?
Right, so, maybe it might have to be eliminated, I don't know.
Well, that's up to their attorney and however they work out.
And then the issue that the building department brought up about the lots here, are reconfiguring the lots?
I didn't see that comment.
We're not configuring the lots.
We're not, it's one law, we said we're not changing the law.
He, he says the property cannot be divided to accommodate an age restricted development.
We're not dividing the property.
So, back to the pool, the pool comment, um, I talked with the, uh, agent, Rick Metcalf is away for this, um, this week vacation, um, and spoke with Carla and she sent over a checklist. Um, we looked up on the C R M E, um, the sewer, the, the board of health code, and it seems like it's actually obtainable, but we had a, an, a rear option of unit, I believe it's one or, or the, the right side of the existing building could own that and the attorney is fine with that, we'll write it up that way. But, it, it kind, we have a bath house, we have a shower already in place, um, the fence has to be brought, brought back up to standards uh, for, for temporary and for this project, but it, it does seem like a pretty nice pool to just throw away, I wanted to look at the options of, um, bringing it back to life and it would be kind of a desirable thing for this complex, just, just because it's there, the, the added cost is already there, if it's, it's, it's simple money to bring it up to the board of health's, um, standard, then why not run with it? Um, just, just a thought, but we're, we're, we're taking in and, and looking into that option. Um, on the south side of the existing building, there is currently a zero curb entry. Um, the way the building's already set up, I already kind of walked through it and it hits everything that, um, Mr. McAlley had, had brought apart, it's single level living, master on the first floor, um, handicap accessible, but those are, are, are key points that we went through before we even developed, tried to develop this. Um, so we can show, you know, a zero entry on the right side and, um, I think, I think that, that side of it will be taken care of on the building department side.
Right, so we got, yeah.
Okay. Um, you have the last then?
No, I can, I guess I already answered questions, but if you have any other questions.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Uh, if everything goes, then we projected starting date.
Phil, you gonna want to start construction this year, correct?
Um, it, it, we, we do have a lot of, of other projects rolling around, I just don't want to spread myself too thin, but if we're gonna hit it, um, it could be potentially early fall, late summer, um, depending how, how we get to, yes. Um, or it could be a next spring project, I don't, I don't really have a timeline. Uh, if there's a concern, I'd gladly talk to someone about.
The, you know, depending on when we get started, it was, uh, springtime, say, will be the projected end date.
The intention would be to start the first three minutes of construction. As however fast we could do, so, obviously we don't want to start all three and then we make a building set there.
Right.
Um, so the intention would be to start with this building and this building, if we can set, the thought is if we can sell one or two of these units, we'll go right into the next one. The intention would be to dig a building as fast as we can. All right.
All codes and inspections. Is there an intended price point for each unit, five plus residents?
Phil could speak more to it about market rate, would be that intention?
There's, there's no, uh, there's no affordable housing being built into the.
Phil would have to speak to that.
Uh, was the question if there's an affordable, um, unit being involved, is that what, what is, I couldn't really hear that.
Yes, is there an affordable aspect to the housing project?
Uh, no, we applied that over, age restricted, uh, bylaw to this piece, particular property and it, and I don't believe it says it in the bylaws that we had to do that.
No, it doesn't need to be.
No, if the pool.
But, but let me just comment on that, um, under one forty-five, forty-eight, the planning board does have an option to put the requirement for an affordable unit, should the planning board decide to. But you're correct, it's not a requirement by the zoning bylaw for that.
Yeah, it comes down to economics, um, you know, there's, there's an infrastructure that has to go in and see if we can get this, this project rolling, um, I don't think it has the, the bandwidth of, of many units. But, we can discuss that further.
So, Phil, would you be averse for just one of those units being affordable?
Um, I'd have to look at the dollar, you know, the, the, the economics of it, you know, there's, like I said, there's putting in this infrastructure and then where, I'm not familiar with what the price point would be if, say, said price would be five hundred thousand for an entry level home, what would the affordable be at? I'm not, I'm not uh, familiar with pricing that.
I believe it's eighty, eighty percent or give or take, don't quote me on that, but.
So, twenty percent, twenty percent less than, than market value, is that, is that the understanding?
Generally.
Well, we run at ten, twelve percent margins, um, it's not ideal.
I guess my question is for the planning board. Um, is the target for fifty-five and over market rate housing, people that live in Townsend or people from outside of town? I guess I'm, I'm curious, um, I know the three up on Fitchburg Road, last I checked, they hadn't sold. And they're at a five hundred thousand price point. And I'm an elderly person who's lived in Townsend a long time and I would be a, a, a target um, person for purchasing one of these. But at that price point, I probably wouldn't look. Um, here in town, I would look at renovating my own house. Um, I, I guess there needs to be something else that makes the apartment, the, the style and I, I'm the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, just know that, and I would like to see one of these units as affordable. I think that there is a market for that in Townsend, I don't know if there's a market within the town, not talking about outside of the town, for, um, market rate units at that price point. So, you have to do something that makes it attractive to the people that live here. One way to do that is to put in sidewalks and make it walkable. And those sidewalks, according to one forty-five fifty-four point one, have to be accessible. Um, they have to meet accessibility standards. And it would be nice if there were, and maybe there is, cause it sounds like these aren't final plans at all. It would be nice if there were a sidewalk running out to Route thirteen and a sidewalk in front of the property along thirteen. If it were walkable, that might be something that's attractive. If you have a pool there that is gonna be used for all of the units, you need to have access, walking access to that pool for the people that live there. So, um, you have to somehow make the units attractive because of, you know, otherwise, you're better off renovating your own home.
What was that last comment? You're better off what?
Renovating your own home and, and staying put. Um, especially if you're someone that purchased your house many years ago, I, I don't know.
Well, the question is,
That's a good point.
The question is if they're not marketable and they don't sell, then what are we stuck with?
I, I'm also, uh.
Well.
This is, this is what the builder wants to do, I have to tell you that market rate is fueled by the cost of the materials.
Yeah.
And they go up every single day. So, you can't ask somebody who's working on twelve percent of a, trying to work a twelve percent margin and it's gonna cost him eight percent to sell it affordable, it does not make sense. Neither do any of the prices today, but that's the way it is. That's reality today. I, I, I guess for.
My point is, we're the planning board, we're trying to do something for aged housing and what good is producing the product if it's not gonna be occupied? And, uh, what have we accomplished?
We changed more, a lot of tone.
Sorry?
Who was that? Did someone wanna speak? It's not.
Well, again, like you say, Laura, it's the, it's the developer's risk here, but, um, so.
We're here to help him plan something, my take. If he is within those zoning bylaws, the town bylaws, whatever requirements are required, we're supposed to help him, not make it worse, what we can't do is we can't change the cost of materials. But they are coming down, some of them, not all of them, but they are coming down.
Okay, but some, some of the topics.
Because I only hear square foot going up. And it has to do with construction, it has to do with the cement, it has to do with the labor, it has to do with the materials.
Well, in that regard, some of the topics that we talked about, such as sidewalks and access to the pool would only increase the cost and the burden on the developer.
That's true.
So, but, but the purpose of the permit is to. So, but, but the purpose of the permit is to accommodate aging people. So that's what this board has to come up with, a scenario that does both. You know, accommodate the developer as much as possible, as well as what the intent of the special permit is.
Well, I can tell you that most of the people that are buying in Townsend now can't afford Boston. So that's why they're coming here, or Lexington, or Medford, or Concord. That's why they'll come here and they'll pay more than anybody who's living in town would pay. But there is a need for fifty-five and over affordability. Because, I mean, just look at the override that just didn't pass because people said that they, they were unable to, they were seniors who were unable to pay and were being priced down of Townsend. And so there is a need for that. And so I guess I would ask the planning board to look at 14548 and incorporate 14554.1 into that bylaw. You know, might not be relevant for this, but. Well, I'd like to ask you this, if you're buying market rate in Townsend and you're a senior who lives in town and you are looking to have something one level, there needs to be something that makes it attractive. And walkability is one thing that would do that for me.
And that's these projects here in front of us. The sidewalks, I don't know if Chris, Mr. Sardar can, can talk to that, but sidewalks to nowhere seem almost essential.
You have no sidewalks anywhere along. If we have to put a sidewalk, you're dangerous.
If you never put them in, you never get them.
I understand.
And so you're close enough here that you can, to town, that you can get to places where there are sidewalks.
I hope no one ever walks from that point there to the center of town on thirteen. That's dangerous. We can say.
Also, what people aren't thinking about is the state's trying to re-engineer Route thirteen. So who knows what they're going to come up with in that. I don't feel the sidewalks are a major concern.
I will tell you one thing about sidewalks, because I live in an illicit drive, we do have sidewalks. Where it's wooded, it's built.
Thank you.
The brush just over, just grows over the sidewalks. And we have to call the highway department. Well, if we call the highway department, they'll come and kind of like cut it back, but it's never really cut back.
But if you have an HOA, that can be one of the things that an HOA.
Yes, but then the question becomes, is this a sidewalk within the HOA each and a property? Or is it?
Or within the right of way.
Put it inside there, now it's, now the question becomes, are you allowing resident, other people to trespass? Who's liable, somebody's falls, it becomes very complicated. There's also not a lot of roads else within the right of way in this area. Because the road gets very close, I actually can't fit it. It'd have to go inside the property, then it becomes a hundred different other concerns. We would, we would not ask us to.
Everyone, please mute yourself. I'm going to go into.
So I guess back to the, to the, oh, what happened? Just market value, I mean, you can go into Timberly Park and you're going to see north of $500,000 for a split entry house that needs work. These are going to be brand new, with clean materials. Or north of $500,000, you know, as you get closer to that project. But worst case, again, I think I said that I'm an avid landlord and that's something, I'm not saying that's my intentions, but that is also a possibility. I don't ever want to catch myself in a jam where we're building six units and can't sell them. My wife is a broker, we have a finger on the pulse on the Townsend market or surrounding towns.
So does that mean you could point up with a development that has only two buildings? And then none of the other ones get to them? Is that what you're saying?
I couldn't hear anything.
We wouldn't build them if we weren't confident we were going to sell them. So if the market completely crashed, we would not, we wouldn't build a building just to build a building. Potential would be to build it to sell.
Like West Metal Road, it's happened in several areas of town where developments were approved. And things changed in the market.
Two thousand eight hit.
Yeah, I mean. The market rate, multi-family, open space development there, that was supposed to have one affordable unit. And, and never, and wasn't developed. And I think it's single families. Since you bring it up again, I will bring up Copperfield, off the Highland. Seven years to development, seven years before they got the permit. And it was, but, okay, but they had their, they had their affordable units. How many are left? That has more to do with the fact that the town isn't able to, we don't have any CPA funds. We have no affordable housing funds to go in and purchase that. Yet we're a town, so this is more a discussion for you, not a discussion for. It's more a discussion for what is the planning board doing to encourage affordable housing and help to maintain it in town? There's a lot of lip service for affordable housing. But there, but everything that we have doesn't encourage that. The closest we come, we don't have. I agree. I, I was on affordable housing for many years. I, I agree. So something needs to. Okay, let's go on. Are there any other questions from those of the public before I get into the, before all comments?
The pool, be considered the recreation area or would the patio be?
The whole.
At ninety-six, there is a recreation area, it's just a fire pit. Which, I'm just.
So.
Patios on units are.
No, the patios would be dedicated. In the open space calculation, I did not include the individual patios for each property. Unit has open spaces. We're treating it as if that's their private. The rest of the green space with the pool, assuming we can get it as a semi-public pool, would be then considered communal?
Oh, yeah. And these are all single story, correct? Slab on grade, correct?
Uh, no, I take that back. There'll be one, the third unit will have a basement with a walkout. But it'll also be zero entry. It'll be zero entry.
The duplex unit at the end of the driveway has a walkout there too, right?
Oh, yeah, actually, the existing one? You're right, the existing one.
The, the concept, the concept of the plan, I don't see any problems with it. I mean, all separate structures, each a duplex. I like that approach. It seems like the traffic flow works well. So I think that some of these small things here that really need to be, we're more confident in what's going to happen and.
I think, I think the architectural plans will help that. We can present those.
I don't know what, you know, the, the investors here are thinking about the pool, whether it's how it fits in with the whole group, or whether it has to be accessible compliant. Because if they exist, I don't know that answer. But, but it is a question that, before we do a final one.
Our intention would be to have, the Board of Health issued us a response of what we're going, whether or not they approve, they approve that. So we wouldn't ask you folks to.
Yeah, frankly, we don't. I, I think it's more, as Phil said, you know, or you said, up to attorney review in terms of advisement of whether or not to make it community or attach it to that one particular dwelling.
So in terms of the planning board, we're being asked to allow special zoning for this particular use. And so our obligation is try to assure whatever we can that it will be delivered. And then the other question about what else would the town want to seek here for that relief? And the other point in mind here, when we start talking about values of these things, you know, the more units there are, the more profitable it is. So we're talking eight units here. So there may be more options to look at that. If there were one or two, then it would be more costly on a unit price basis for the developer. So that's.
Okay. I am going to cut mandatory referral comments now. And the first one is from the Board of Selectmen. And their comment is, there are several components to this application. And Select Board trusts the expertise of the Planning Board. Select Board thanks the Planning Board for all their efforts. The next one is the Water Department approves plans as submitted. Land use coordinator. Jessica, did you want to go over your comments? Or do you want me to just read it into the record?
Why don't you read them into the record? You can just go through all of the comments and then if any of the board members have questions or if the applicant's team has questions, I can help respond at that point.
Okay. So your comments are, one, application for age restricted development site plan review, special permit and stormwater management for attachments. So. Under stormwater, I'm assuming these two next sections are your comments. Stormwater management narrative indicates there is one stormwater outfall in seven point zero. Is this depicted on the site plans? Chris, do you have these comments? Okay, all right.
I can respond to, I can, you only responded writing with the next set of plans? Or you only, I can respond to them or I don't?
What's your question?
I would think that.
I have to put a narrative together for the stormwater response?
Exactly. That's, you know, hit it once.
I like that.
All right. B, does your stormwater management narrative include all terms, items required for 175-44? Prefaces C, prefaces C six. C, applicant should consider future responsible party for O M N activities, reporting, et cetera, post-construction in consideration of 175-48. D, applicant needs to provide license to enter for town review as per 175-45B. And E, it appears that one-third to one-half acre of trees may be cleared for septic purposes. Should a stormwater management BMP be considered down gradient of these areas given the change in the ground cover potentially leading to increased runoff? And then under ARD special permit, in summary, 145-54.1B notes the planning board may grant a special permit for age restricted development on a property that meets certain requirements within both RA and RB zoning. This property meets the three standards listed in the bylaw. B, although noted in your narrative, site plans should show dimensions between buildings to remind contractor of twenty-foot setback between structures per 145-54.1, prefaces C, prefaces C two. It appears plantings are north of the proposed driveway along Route thirteen. Site lines should be considered with any changes to vegetation in this area. The existing curve along Route thirteen poses a potential safety issue. D, although noted in your narrative, site plans should better show that is proposed to happen with the, meaning what is supposed to happen with the existing house, driveway and accessory features. E, is space allows an area for emergency vehicle access slash turnaround should be included? F, if space allows an area along Route thirteen designated for pickup of trash toters could be included? If we have our answer on that one. And G, the board should consider if deceptive reserve area and trench system qualify for open space. Thank you, Jessica.
Well done.
And then Highway Department will require a driveway permit from the Highway Department. Building Commissioner, C attached emails dated 5/31/4. Robert Garside is our Building Commissioner. It is my opinion that the intent of the APO is that the land not be used for junkyards, wastewater, toxins, et cetera, that it would be restricted to residential use only. The age restricted development bylaw clearly denotes and includes the RA district in the bylaw. And therefore, it is my opinion that age restricted housing would be allowed on this lot in the densities as noted in the age restricted bylaw. I would recommend that the zoning planning board revisit the language of the APO and correct amend to identify single and multi-families as this is not in harmony with the age restricted development bylaw. Further, previous building commissioner did rule that the age restrictive development can be on this premises. That is clarified. What was? From Philip Pashner. Oh, there's another one. This is no further comments at this time regarding stormwater management. Housing Authority. Thank you for working with Townsend on your project. It will be great to have additional units for our aging population. As the Housing Authority works towards securing federal vouchers, would it be possible to refer an age qualified client having a HUD fair market voucher? I was not aware of HUD fair market vouchers. Interesting. Townsend Affordable Housing Trust. Please, okay, please add sidewalks along Route thirteen and within the development to promote walkability in Townsend. Please provide at least one affordable unit in the development, assuming these are market rate units, or at least ten percent of the units be. Are these also Townsend Housing Authority and Affordable Housing Trust are both working towards creating a greater amount of affordable housing for Townsend, which allows people of varying backgrounds, incomes and stages of life to live here in Townsend. The recommendations provided in the mandatory referral forms are not required by Townsend's bylaws, but would help to provide additional housing to a greater population of people, not just those who can afford affordable housing. There are some definitions of the terms used and. Do you want me to read those into the record? We can just have them in the minutes for. We can just have them in the minutes for, I think that's probably. Okay. As long as everybody gets a copy of those. It'll all be included in the minutes of this meeting. All of this will be included in public hearing minutes, all of it. And so does the applicant get those? Yes, you have, oh, yes.
Did, did you have one from the Department of Health? Did I miss that?
Uh. I don't think there's a Department of Health.
There is a bunch from the Department of Health.
No, but he's working.
Oh, yeah, we do know.
So Phil, did you, Beth, did you forward the Department of Health comments to Phil?
Yeah, they all got it.
Um, did you, did I have them in that packet?
No.
They're not in that packet?
No.
Okay, let me quickly find them. My apologies. I did upload some last minute submittals from the Housing Authority, and I may have dropped those somehow. I'm gonna look quickly in my file. One moment.
The Housing Authority is here.
Okay.
So it's Townsend Trust.
Yep, I'm gonna quickly take a look and see what I can find. I, they won't be far. All right. Okay, yes, I can read them for you. I do have them here. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read them. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is from the Board of Health. Comment is, the pool must be permitted by the Board of Health per 105 C M R 435. The septic must be permitted by the Townsend Board of Health and meet the requirements of 310 C M R 15 and the Townsend Board of Health Subsurface Sewer Disposal Regulations. No nuisance conditions may exist on the lot. Signed by Rick Medcalf on June 26, 2024. And I will forward that.
Okay. And that will be it, right? Everything else I read?
Yes, thank you for noting that.
All right. Uh, let's see, so next I've got the stormwater management review to read, which is dated July 8th, so that just came in today. Dear Planning Board members, we received the following documents via email on June 3rd. And I'll just quickly say that it was an age-restricted development site plan, stormwater report, age-restricted housing site plan, special age-restricted development. These are the documents received by Graves Engineering and the stormwater management application. Graves Engineering, Inc. has been requested to review the plans and supporting materials for compliance with the Townsend Stormwater Regulations 175, Article 5, Townsend NPDES Phase 2 Stormwater Management Chapter 85, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass D E P, Stormwater Handbook and Standard Engineering Practices, G E I, was authorized to proceed with the review on June 24, 2024. Comments. Regarding 175, Article 5, the plans need to include the number of square feet of the land to be disturbed. And then hydrology computations and stormwater management comments. G E I reviewed the hydrology computations and found them to be in order, except as noted in the following comment. Post-construction stormwater flows plan shows the overall tributary, tributary areas to each of the three analysis points. The plan needs to be revised to delineate each of the six sub-contagments to allow us to finish our review.
So I assume that you're working hand in hand with the consultant here?
Yeah, so what I would do is revise the plan and I should send it directly to him again.
Okay.
So he can review them and keep it conventional. Assuming the revisions are satisfactory, he'll issue a letter.
Okay, great. Okay, that's good.
For compliance with the Mass D E P Stormwater Handbook and Stormwater Standards is reasonable, except as noted in the following two comments. For Mass D E P Stormwater Standard 3, the engineer claimed a provided recharge volume of 3,708 CF for the proposed infiltration basins as by adding together total storage volumes of the three basins. Instead, the storage volume below the lowest outlet of each basin should be used to calculate the provided recharge volume. Six, sediment for bay size and calculations need to be provided. And seven, for the record, in the total suspended solids, T S S, removal worksheet, there is an errant overlap in removal credit due to the 90% removal rate utilized for the bio-rent retention area, rain garden. The 90% credit includes adequate pretreatment, i.e. one pretreatment device. However, credit was taken for both pretreatment devices, the grass channel and the sediment for bay. Credit for one of the pretreatment devices needs to be deleted. Nevertheless, the proposed treatment train complies with Mass D E P Stormwater Standard 4, total suspended solids removed. General engineering comments, G E I has no issues. We trust this letter addresses your review requirements. Feel free to contact his office. Having read that, Graves also does the review for all the other things, like the bylaws and the offsets and all that other stuff. And I'll just put it before the board if you want to have that review added to the stormwater review. It would be, it would be at the cost of the applicant, but the board has to determine whether or not they feel they're going to need that.
I personally don't think so. I think that I'm, I'm happy with them looking at it from a stormwater perspective, because speaking just for myself, I have not expertise on stormwater at all. But I think in terms of the other aspects of the plan, in terms of setbacks, in terms of frontage requirements, in terms of architectural design considerations, that the board has the competency to do that. Based upon the reviews.
Well, I think we all have to rely on the consultants that the applicant provides. Again, I have some background in this, so I could just do a cursory review. But everything that I've seen to date is professionally done. I think the reports and the information that made available today is very comprehensive and that you know just what you're concerned about. And you've got an order of conditions there, so with that.
I mean, I don't, I don't remember at all in my experience where we had had a consultant review compliance to the.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
We've had stormwater reviews.
Yes.
But we've just taken the input from the other, you know, building commissioner, the other boards and what have you, along with our own review.
But in terms of a cursory review, I mean, there's a lot of basic stuff that you see, you know, the contours, you see the retention basins, you see the appliances quote unquote that'll be used and how the flow is dispersed. You can make a reasonable judgment about the capacities without doing specific engineering. But that's why we have sort of like documents for that. So I don't, I don't claim to be an expert in it, but I do have a general perspective of what should be there and what should be expected or what does physically mechanically work or appear to work.
And I will note that typically the building commissioner will not grant an occupancy permit if the zoning requirements are not met.
Totally don't.
You don't want to give it a building permit.
Correct.
Right, so I mean, so in any project, when you start a project, this is what you anticipate is going to be needed. And then as projects are progressing, different things surface that weren't anticipated or unforeseen things. And that's the time that we have to make a judgment as to, you know, what's reasonable to resolve the issue. But in terms of planning and permitting, all we can do is rely on what's anticipated and what consultants are saying to us and address what we think might be other concerns. So I'm very comfortable about the progress that we have and what we've provided, which will help us to get this going.
Okay, so just for the record, I'll go over what those things might be. And Lance has a lot more experience and I do, he chaired this planning board for many years and did a really good job, so we're glad to have him back. But it would include site plan special permit review criteria. Bylaw background, applicable sections of Mass General on Townsend zoning bylaws, Article 8, 145-53, age-restricted development, 145-24, driveways and entrance, 145-26, residential district, 145-33, parking requirements, provisions applicable to all districts, 145-40, applicable protection overlay district, 145-42, site plan review, 145-52, outdoor lighting, and 145-65, special permits. Applicable sections to the Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 2, 175-10, general requirements for applications, 175-25, special permit granting authority, 175-26, employment of outside consultants, and 175-17. So.
A lot of that's been addressed in the narrative already there.
Okay, but we wanted to have a discussion and then it's all with the board. Gets to, I don't think there's any motion on that at all. Then. Public hearing view. And is there anybody else here that would like to speak in favor of the project? Okay, is anyone here in opposition to the project? There are none. Okay. I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing to July 22nd or August 12th. What do you think would be better for you?
Does he need more time?
I'm asking him.
I want to say we'll be ready for the 22nd, but I really think it's going to come down to the architecture. Let's schedule for the 22nd. We could all drive by you ahead of time if we have to.
Okay, all right.
If that.
And we can. Should, should that happen? What will happen? Depending on how close we are, because we would have to post it for the 22nd, which means I would open it.
Would that be five days?
Beth, how long in advance do we know, do we need to know if they would need it to be August 12th instead of July 22nd?
Um, well, it's probably safer to just, you know, continue it till the 22nd and then continue it again if they're not ready, I would imagine. Yeah. There's no problem. We would just open and continue and, you know.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. So, all right, so you don't have anything else booked for July 22nd yet?
Correct.
You want to do the 6:45 again?
Yep, if that works, yep.
Is that okay with you, Chris?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. So I'll entertain that motion to continue to July 22nd at 6:45 PM.
I second.
I'll entertain the motion.
I made the motion. We continue the public hearing until July the 12th at 6:45.
July 22nd.
Excuse me, July 22nd at 6:45.
Yes. And Lance made the motion and.
I'll second Lance's.
Robert seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, roll bubble, please. Carol Hawes, yes.
Lance McNally, yes.
Robert Dering, yes.
And Marsha, yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Phil, it's better.
Thank you. It's, it goes away tonight. It shakes and chills.
Wow, miserable.
Sorry to hear.
Ah.
Well, you're, you're released now.
Hudson brought in, he was like a few minutes ago. Awesome. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All ready. Oh, we had an appointment.
At 7:15.
At 7:15.
Yeah.
But there was an appointment, not the hearing, so I'm sorry.
She's here. I saw her. It's a goal with the.
Yeah, the Beals, 2.2.
The report of the trees, sun at west, the solar rate.
The vegetation monitor for.
Yeah. He can have a full minute.
Okay, we have them in front of us.
Okay, good evening. I'm sorry, my video is not working for some reason. I don't know. Zoom always does weird things for me, so I apologize. I hate not showing my face. So, good evening, everyone. Reagan Andriola with Beals and Thomas here on behalf of, of the applicant, well, Lockbrook Solar for the Lockbrook Solar Array on 22 West Meadow Road. As I think we all are aware, condition number five of the site plan approval required annual monitoring for five years from the start, or five different monitoring, yeah, I guess annual monitoring from the beginning of construction. So I have met with you all in 2021, 2022, 2023, and now again in 2024. So I did go out to the site a couple weeks ago to review the condition of the trees. As you may remember, last year, there was a number of trees that had not survived, so there was only 16 of the 22 original trees. So there was, it was, there was a request by this board to add four additional trees, which were put in in August of last year to a total of 20 trees. As you can remember, we've, we've talked about the fact that the original plan did have some shrubs, but really those were not ever providing any screening value. So kind of moving forward, even after that first meeting, we've really only been focusing on the trees for the fact of, those are the plants that are providing screening value along the street. So I am happy to say that all 20 of the trees have survived and are growing. I thought everything looked pretty good. And in this letter, I have comparisons from last year's monitoring to this year's, basically from the exact same point. If you scroll down, you can see. And it's pretty obvious in each of the photos that there's been, you know, a fair amount of growth in the one year. And like I said, all of those trees, all the ones from last year and the new ones that were installed are all surviving and growing. Obviously, it's, you know, we're not going to have full screening of this array, but it's certainly, you know, there's growth that can be seen. And I think everything looks like it's in pretty good health. And especially if you actually scroll to the next page, I think that might even be some of the most significant. You can see that photo. The photo on the left had, it was two of the service barrier trees. They're kind of like a clump tree and at the time they were struggling a bit. And you can see in the photo to the right that those have significant growth and certainly look much better than they did last year. So, I mean, pretty, pretty simple, I think. I was happy with what I saw. Unless the board has any other specific questions. You know, I think, I think we're good and we probably have one more. Monitoring next year. monitoring next year.
No, or make the progress.
Okay. The board seems to be fine with your report.
Okay, fantastic. Well, sorry to see me, but I'm waving. Happy to see you all again.
Sorry it took so long to get to you.
That's okay. No, that's all right. So, all right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Right, so now we're at work session. Review, discuss Townsend MFOD and site plan review, special permit zoning bylaws amendment, revised MRPC. Are we doing that tonight? On the MRPC, are we going to wait till the next meeting for somebody to come here?
I think that makes sense, yes. I think that, you know, just keep reviewing the bylaw and looking it over and being familiar with it. But a lot of progress was made in his last visit. So at this point, it makes sense just to wait. But send me any comments in the meantime that you have and I'll correspond with our MRPC planner. You know what I mean? So if something comes up and you think of it, I certainly would be happy to to stay in contact with any questions or concerns.
We move June 1 and June 24 to July 22. Review discuss, he needs to plan. We don't have to go, we're not going to do 3.3 storm and we, anything else on 3.4 stormwater applications?
You can look over those. Jessica spent some time on 3.4 and she revised some minor things in the stormwater management permit application and forms. Mostly just, you know, outlining compliance with the bylaw and, you know, just, you know, like reducing the number of copies similar to what we did with the regulations and so. You can look them over. They're all in the folder. And I've printed them out for you. They're there on the table if you also wanted to look them over. I'm not sure if that requires a board vote or not. I'm wondering if it might. I don't know.
Why don't you make a note of it for the next meeting?
Okay.
And we'll have, and I don't have a problem voting on them.
Okay, yeah.
If anyone has any comments, send them to Beth in the meantime.
Okay. All right. And then, and then we'll probably, you could just take a vote on them next time. Just, just review them and approve them. Yeah. Okay, great.
Correspondence.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. That's really it for, for that.
I'm going to have Carol finish the correspondence now.
Okay, this is Town of Pepperell Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing July 15, coming forward to 30 PM regarding application submitted by Fabio Lacerda requesting a special permit made for site plan review and a land disturbance permit to permit construction of a contractor's yard with indoor and outdoor storage space as well as the construction of a 2,400 square foot two.
Excuse me, we seem to have lost audio from the selectmen's room.
Yeah. I, can you unmute? Because Hartley, I can still hear you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they are muted. Okay, please, those in the selectmen's room, please unmute.
All right, we can be unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, for a minute there. Okay, got it.
Okay, this is the Town of Lunenburg Office of the Planning Board Public Hearing, Monday, July 22, 2024 at 6:05 PM. This is for site plan approval. For stormwater management permit. The Development Property Management LLC for redevelopment of the subject property for use as a contractor's yard with a steel storage building. Location is at 236, 240 and 224 Summer Street. Materials are viewable at the planning office, 960 Massachusetts Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass.
Where's Summer Street?
In Lunenburg.
Yeah. So stormwater for a construction building on Summer Street?
For redevelopment of the subject property for use as a contractor's yard.
Wasn't that similar to what we just did for Pepperell?
Yeah, Pepperell was to do the two-story office, oh. Contractor's yard with indoor and outdoor storage space as well as the construction of a 2,400 square foot two-story building with office space.
This is the summer? In two towns?
No, that's in Shattuck and this one is S and L Property Management.
Oh, interesting.
Where's Summer Street?
I don't know. I know Summer Street in Pittsburgh, but I don't know about Summer Street in Lunenburg.
He says contractors, I wonder, says, does it?
I don't think it impacts us at all.
No, but it's, I mean, it's.
I know where Summer Street is in Pittsburgh.
They're going to do this. I mean, I think it's good that people still have some faith in moving forward and building things.
Because of so many empty buildings, you wonder why they'd even want to build an office building, but I don't know. Okay, this is the last one.
Okay.
This is from the Planning Board Townsend. Notice of decision, notice is hereby given of the stormwater management permit number 2024-01. According to Townsend bylaws, section part 2, general bylaws, chapter 85, NPDES, phase 2, stormwater management part 4 regulation, chapter 175, Planning Board, chapter 175, Article 5, stormwater regulation was created on June 10, 2024 to Philip Paul Meta Dyson LLC for a stormwater management permit for construction of two single-family residential dwellings located at 108 West Meadow Road, 1.
Hello, selectmen's room. Please unmute again. I don't know why you, you're muting yourselves, but please unmute.
It's doing it all by itself.
I think it's doing it by itself.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll let you know when we lose audio. I'm sorry about this. I don't know what's causing it, but I'll, I'll keep you updated on it.
All right, thank you, Hartley.
Okay, that was my mistake. I apologize. I was trying to unmute myself. Madam Chair, there are a few more legal notices from the Conservation Commission. If you'd like, I can read those. There's also a correspondence from the AG on the Article 14. There's also an appointment letter from the Board of Selectmen for Patrick. Would you like me to go through those? They're in the, okay, first of all, I'll go quick. Conservation, the Townsend Conservation Commission is holding a public hearing Wednesday, July 10, 7 PM. And it's a review, to review our request for a determination of applicability regarding the upgrade of the current septic system to the installation of a Presby type system that is at, oh, gosh, what's the address? 18 Copper Smith Way. Let me go to the next one. 21 Emery Road. There is a public hearing Wednesday, July 10 to consider a notice of intent filed by Matthew Morrow Environmental Consulting for the applicant Ace Your Home Lux LLC for property located at 21 Emery Road. The proposed work is for the replacement of an existing septic system within the 100-foot buffer. So the next one is 94 Main Street. Again, Conservation Commission is having a public hearing on Wednesday at 7. And they are considering a request for determination to install a crushed stone pad and a 12 by 24 shed submitted by Stephen Silva from 94 Main Street. The next item is from the AG's office and delivered to the planning board by the town clerk, Kathleen Spofford. And it is regarding Townsend Special Town Meeting of May 7, 2024, case number 11384, warrant article number 14, in parentheses, zoning. Dear Mrs. Spofford, Article 14, we approve Article 14 and the map amendment voted under it from the Townsend, May 7, 2024, Special Town Meeting. We will send the approved map to you by regular mail. This is in regards to 0 and 39 Greenville Road, a zoning change from industrial back to residential. We have an appointment letter from the Office of the Select Board, and that is regarding Patrick Collins, Collins. Oh, here we go. I've been practicing this. Callen. Callencheck? Callencheck. Yes. And it is regarding notifying him just today that he has been appointed. So this is his official appointment letter and we're looking forward to walking, officially welcoming, welcoming him to the planning board. As soon as he gets sworn in, I will continue to onboard him. And we have a planning board notice of decision. I think Carol read that, right? Did she read them? Yeah, okay, thank you. And then one flyer regarding the Townsend commuter shuttle effective July 1. The service is now on demand only. And riders need to book one day in advance for either taking the shuttle from Town Hall or from Pittsburgh Intermodal. And there's a flyer that should be online now. I'll double check that with a phone number to call and the schedule. So that's completely changed over to on-demand service only. And that's it.
And it's, yeah, is it, and is it still no fee?
Correct, it's completely free. Yep. And we're, we're trying to coordinate with other towns too, if, if you know, for students and that was a great service.
Okay. So I don't see any other business for this evening unless somebody has something else they'd like to bring up.
I'd like to make a motion to dismiss, adjourn.
8:15 PM.
8:15 PM.
Okay, we'll call both.
I'll second.
There's Lance and then Robert seconded. However, I'd like you to make a note that Andrew did excuse himself.
Okay.
He was absent with notice.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll call both. Carol Hawes, yes.
Lance McNally, yes. Robert Derring, yes.
Laura Schipren, yes.